Elio, do you want to discuss the copy?
Well, I make myself available to council members. We have some communication or conversation on some of these topics.
Councilman, do you have any questions regarding the copy?
I took some mic and talked a long time.
For the record, my name is Ben Chaneysey. I'm also a council member. This first came up to my attention probably a few weeks ago when I got an email from one of the vendors who was upset regarding the bid process claiming that it was not made available for all the bid requirements here. So I told him that I would take a vote for work as the contract was as it would become in front of us in the month of September. But as I was going through it, I was going, and some of the questions that I had would be, now, on the winning bid and the one lower bid, there's a $100,000 difference. Now, without having the full contract in front of me, I was just piecemealing some of the questions. So one of the questions I would have is, through the contract, were all the equipment that was submitted, were they all comparable?
No.
They were all different, so the type of machines were different?
There were strengths and weaknesses across the eight RFPs received by eight vendors.
So the actual, again, just so I understand, so the machine that, I mean, the winning bid machine was much substantially better than all the other copiers, that they couldn't achieve the goals set outside the bidding contract itself?
No. I'll say that that was not my position as a representative of the board. There are a set of criteria that is well spelled out in the RFP released by the Finance Department in early May. We asked vendors with interest in doing business with the Danbury School District to submit a response to the RFP informing with the required requested specifications of the bid. Unfortunately, copiers are not a commodity. It's not where we either on our own or by piggybacking, say, on a state contract or copy paper where it's a commodity item and in most instances you accept people bid. Given that non-commodity item, there are other criteria which must be met in other qualifying decisions. In the RFP, and I have several documents here, as I please members of the council here make them available to you, I'll share them with you. It was clearly stated in the terms of the RFP, with regards, excuse me, with the criteria for the award, the whole item, the award would not be based solely on price. Other qualifying criteria would be considered by the board, equipment, service, reliability, functionality of the equipment. Also stated, vendors request their whole items in its entirety. So there are a set of criteria, as established by my office, sent forth to the public as a general invite to vendors to participate in the bid process.
And one of the major factors between the winning bid and all the bids was the fair market value buyout. Can you explain why only one vendor submitted a fair market value buyout of a dollar and all the others did not?
That I can't explain because more than one. Most recently, Mr. Boyle, who's the executive with Base Technology, as I was about to ask you earlier this afternoon, and that was one of their, well, one of their facets they actually presented that only one company responded to the fair market value buyout. That's not true. We had two vendors. The other outside of A&amp;O office is Camden Business. Camden Business with the opportunity to submit two proposals, one based on fair market value and the other based on a dollar buyout.
But that was not one of your criterias in your bid package, in your proposal, to have that buyout?
Yes. Because with my specific reference to the RFP, all vendors were requested to submit all of their monetary bid items on a pricing sum scheme. It was clearly stated in the RFP as such. Base Technology made a business decision of its own, not its own, to quote a lease buyout value of fair market value. Three-word term, fair market value. They chose this as a decision of theirs to not report a monetary value.
In the school system today, how many machines do you currently have?
In mid-sixties, sixty-four, sixty-five.
And they're currently on lease with a fair market value buyout?
They are currently on lease with a fair market value buyout.
A dollar?
Not of a dollar buyout.
So it's a fair market value buyout?
Fair market value, definitely a buyout.
Do you know what that is?
All right, I do not have that number available.
But your winning bid did have that dollar buyout?
Yes, they submitted a proposal with a dollar buyout at the end of the 48-month term.
Why did you accept that dollar buyout this time, like you gave you that with the previous contract?
Well, I provided my analysis to the board. The board, discussions along the right of right of input, reached the decision to award it forward with the incumbent in the office.
So it's the intention of this board to emphasize that dollar buyout, to extend the life of these machines beyond the four years?
The board, not see me as the board, but the board at all times reserves the right, as it was prescribed in the RFP, to give any consideration to future value, whether it chooses, likes to purchase equipment, or simply, lack of better word, here, throw over the case to the event, to the vendors.
And then, if I may, I also think it's important, however, that four years ago, when we negotiated this currently, so it was four years ago?
Yes.
We weren't in the economic time and we are currently. So perhaps more than ever, the dollar buyout is an even stronger consideration.
But wouldn't it be true to say that if the machine was having higher fair market value, that your lease payment would be lower?
Pardon me, I didn't hear that.
With a contract with a fair market value as opposed to a contract with a dollar buyout, the one with the fair market value buyout, that contract, with all things being equal, would be a lower price per.
Not in all cases.
Why not, why not, why not in this case?
There are incentives, it's based on who the third-party administrator of the financing terms is agreeing with, or we would agree with. There are, to my understanding, incentives in the form of tax credits to leasing firms for a dollar buyout lease versus a fair market value. We also bid, after requested proposals to come back to the district on a tax and sales exempt status, which we've secured over the years, and I most recently had a conversation with the assessor's office, assistant assessor, that law of the tax abatements apply, given that we're an entity of the municipality. So by textbook definition, yes, you are correct, and that is the textbook definition, that in most instances, the fair market value would come out with a lower, lesser purity payment than a dollar buyout. But when you have other conditions that are available to certain leasing firms, such as tax credits, the tax credits apply to certain programs, not others.
So you basically treat this as a capital, basically you're going to finance this lease?
Be treated as a capital or operating.
So that's if you bought, as you bought the machine?
Sure, correct.
So you treat it.
To be amortized.
Correct. So you're going out, so people, so you're going out and buying the machines and you're going to finance it over time, this law will take advantage of the tax credits that are available for purchasing the copy of equipment?
Correct.
Which, taking that into consideration, will bring the payment down for the overall expense of the machines using the credits, as opposed to leasing them when those credits will not be available. If you lease it with a fair market value buyout, those credits will not be available in that case. That's true?
That is, as my understanding, that's true, yes.
So with the lease that you accepted allows you to take advantage of the capital credits, the tax credits?
We have yet, just so that I'm clear here to the council and the public, is that the lease documents have not been reviewed or approved by a council this time, whether it be the board's council or corporation council. That is one of the remaining steps before we come to the common council for final approval of the award.
So this may not follow by, with these credits, until your council takes a look at them?
No, no. It's built in that the credits, the contract, the lease, that the credits do apply, they have an amortization table from the financing firm.
So, again, I was trying to, so I understand, I'm not trying to be a specious person. So, taking the fact that you were amortizing the lease payments, what's the interest rate that you'd be getting?
The, I don't have that number.
And has that been taken into consideration in the overall?
Well, then, taking credit consideration, the overall is the value as a whole, as the board sees it, to remain with the incumbent and to enter into 48-month term, when compared to all other bidding firms, the fair side-by-side comparison. Again, Base is not alone in terms of not meeting our specifications. They were invited, we had eight firms respond to our RFP. I took the liberty of inviting five. Why might be presented, I haven't presented that by the invited table that would qualify them as finalists. It was very clear, and I'm convinced, go to the five that you are vendors of interest at this time, and I welcome you back for a one-to-one review.
Did anybody have to resubmit bids?
Absolutely not.
So has more documentation, you know how to resubmit bids?
Resubmit bids, I would never, I mean, that goes against the entire process of having an RFP. I'm not one to negotiate after an open review of what is received.
Because again, I was looking through here, I didn't see that fair market value buyout clause, I didn't see that in the original conditions.
Why don't you show me the page here?
That's not, I just can't see it. I saw the email.
No, this on.
This is the best example to share with you, with the council. Is the actual bid received by, submitted by Base Technologies.
No, I just need to see the original bid.
Understood. Under pricing summary, the cost analysis, the gray last item on the page here, costs for, the cost per copy print must include a lease buyout, principal only, value of dollar sign blank, and the only response I received as part of the official RFP by Base Technologies is the words fair market value. That'll leave us here with that.
Just, why do you have that? In this document here, where it says, your proposed proposal just applied, is that stated here? This item is she, cost analysis sheet?
I hear.
What is it in here?
There's reference here that the only bid and only values that will be considered are to be reported on the pricing form. The term of contract, the contract also highlights here that the monthly cost of sample copy allowance is twice the whole, we only reconcile on a basis, all proposals shall be submitted on the pricing form to pay for this application.
So this form indicates a fair market value?
Ben, not to be rude, it's taking up quite a bit of time in our meeting, I just wonder if it would be easier for councilmen who might have more questions to step outside and go into the city's office to talk to them about it, or do we feel that maybe we have some?
I will pass it to another councilman to answer questions.
Do you have any information?
I can help you.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Joe Cavill, for the record, I'm a council member here also in City Danbury, and through the chair, if you have a question for the director, Mr. Ongro, I just want to be clear that purchasing rules, regulations, laws have been followed in the bid of this copyright contract? If you say that they are, I'm comfortable with that, and I would come forward with the board's decision on this. As long as you can assure me that the rules that you're following, or I'm moving the board, to run the board and run the school system, the copy of bid, I'm here with that. I want to verify that.
I can say yes to that. We are prepared and.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have council-like questions regarding this matter? All right, Tom, any affiliate partner who gets to go?
Actually, I just want to make a statement. Having worked for the city for 38 and a half years, and being involved in the bid process, if you're arguing apples and apples, there's no problem, because then you can take the little bit. But if you're talking apples and Cadillacs, it's two different things. I know I'm a fire service. You go to a manufacturer, you might pay a little bit more money with it. However, what if you have a part that broke after it was warranted, and the part was worth $15,000? They gave us the part and they told us to use it later. You do go, and I'm not saying this happened, but you do have relationships. Like I said, if you own apples and apples, it's cut and dry, a little bit gets it. But when you're talking differences, then there's a lot of variables, there's relationships, and that's all going to be taken in, and I can understand how the board would do what they did, and as long as everything was above board and the bids were open, I agree with you, I've seen after bids were open, people come to us and say, oh, I didn't know that, I would have done that, I could have made that lower. Well, guess what? You didn't do that when you opened the bid. Now we catch you. Now you're rude right now, I'm going to change it after you opened the bid. So, as long, like, I grew up, come from Cavill, as long as you did everything above board and you believe that, then I'll back yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Tom Stoney, member of the common council. I served at the state level on RFQ, review boards, panels, and I absolutely agree that just because a dollar's a cent maybe lower doesn't mean it's necessarily a better bid. I actually told Mr. Boyle, I said, you might have a terrible bid. I'm not, this, the issue here and the questions are not predicated on believing that Mr. Boyle or someone else necessarily had a better proposal for the board. And it wasn't to bring all the board members, or make all the board members have to sit here and listen to a bunch of questions and a back and forth, because I would have preferred to have this vetted through the council, through an ad hoc committee, through a council workshop, but was told through the council president that because of timing, we couldn't do that prior to the September council meeting, and that this was the best way, as proposed, I believe, by the superintendent or the board, to address this. So that I want to get on from a procedural standpoint, that we'd like to have gone through this on the council record, through a committee process. That being said, we're here, and the questions that I had, Mr. Chaneysey asked some of them, some of them were answered, so I won't repeat those, but is the winning bid, to the chair, does the winning bid include servicing, repair, replacement parts, or anything along those lines? Yes, it does. And did the, did all the bids include that? Yes. When this contract runs its course, and I presume at the end of it is the dollar buyout, correct, if the city could choose to do that? Yes. If the city exercises that dollar buyout, along with that dollar buyout, is there any ongoing repair or part supply or warranty obligations by the particular winning bidder, or are we in the position, the board of end position, not the city necessarily, where you have to then execute a distinct and new agreement for servicing of these units that you possibly should survive for a dollar?
We would, it would warrant entering into a service-repair agreement, and we are not by any means tied to a continued relationship with the copy provider. We decide to own them, we own them at the end of the term for the value of one dollar, machines are ours. We can, we are at liberty to contract for service or repair with any firm, which we feel, and that time is the best interest of the school district.
And if the city chooses, and I think Councilman Chaneysey brought this out, with a dollar buyout as opposed to fair market value, please direct me if I'm wrong, the ongoing lease obligations from a standpoint of payment are a little bit higher, because in the back end, you have the ability to exercise this dollar buyout, is that correct?
That is, that's correct. Now, in fact, 90% of the time, the best analogy I could provide to the public, to the council, is residual value when one leases a deal. All right, if you want your monthly payment to come down a bit, you're hoping to shoot for a higher residual value.
And I appreciate that, and it does make sense to the extent that you want to keep, or that the board wants to keep, that equipment at the end. If you choose, as a board, not to keep that equipment at the end, then that benefit obviously is foregone. Let's say there's better equipment out there, that the potential cost of entering into a repair and maintenance agreement with a company for a four-year-old equipment might be somewhat prohibitive as opposed to packaging, again, a deal where someone provides the equipment and repair. That's, I'm concerned on the back end here, particularly with the rapid advancement on an 18-month cycle, basically, of technology, or less than that even, that we could be in a position, and I certainly would hope that that's considered, of having equipment that is difficult to obtain a warrant or repairs for, but having paid for that opportunity for the dollar buyout, was that part of the deliberations or thought process, because I think a lot of that was in executive session, so I don't know.
Well, if I may speak, Tom, I mean, the dollar buyout was a strong consideration, because I wish I could tell, as I'm sure you do, what's going to happen economically during the next four years. You know, but one of the things we had to take into consideration were deficits that we're going to run into as a district, and whether or not we're going to continue to be flat funded by the city over the next four to 10 years, and we don't know what's going to happen. You know, so looking ahead, you know, when we felt that the dollar buyout was a strength of the bid, because like I said, we don't know where we're going to be, and regardless of whether or not there's, you know, technology that's 10 times better, you know, if it's a choice between, you know, keeping teachers in a classroom or buying new copiers, we're going to keep teachers in a classroom. So, you know, this all played into, you know, our deliberations.
Mr. Ongro, is it true that should conditions improve and we're able to get new equipment after the dollar buyout, we can go ahead and sell the equipment at fair market value and get whatever we can get to defray the cost of replacing the equipment, is that true?
That's true, absolutely.
If I may follow up with Sir Ongro, does the city currently have any repair or warranty contracts for equipment, for copiers, that are separate, distinct from the provider of the copiers, such as potentially be the case at the end of this year if there was a buyout because of tighter funds and the ability to get new copiers?
None that I am aware of, given that I have never looked into research data on the city side business now.
Do you have any idea what the cost of that would be, on other maybe school districts or other municipalities?
I do, I do. I had this very conversation with the incumbent on the existing machine, and the service to repair, carried for one year, was approximately about $120,000 for your old equipment.
So, Tom, as you can see, one that we've spent a long time here discussing, whether or not, even, even though we were saving on any one bid, the conversation surrounded, you know, whether or not we should keep these for a year and simply pick up to one point and then still have a savings, but we didn't think the savings was sufficient to do it at this point. But in four years, you know, there are districts that keep them for five years, you know, you're running a risk, there's no doubt, but that was a question I, we had asked that day before we came to the meeting to look at what would cost to me, you know, need to just keep these machines for a year. I think it was half that amount we probably would keep, knowing what I know now and what I know. So, in all honesty, you've been on council, as long I've been here, you know, we changed the buses, and that was very difficult for the board. We had drivers for 20 years, the board is not about to look lightly at $100,000 savings, I'm sorry. It took a lot of conversation and discussion, and even at that, you kind of wonder, I don't think anyone's perfect, but I can tell you that we followed the procedures, and there have been, like, we knew that maybe there have been some questions about some of the items, but we were clear that the people who meant the space were the ones we're going to look at, and we didn't think it was appropriate to dismiss others, not, not to have those who chose not to give us the equipment to come back and to relook at, we didn't think that was fair.
I forget that.
And, you know, so that's, and that's where, I think, the board looked at that number Elio just gave you, there's some here saying you'll never keep it, but we don't know, we just don't know what's going to happen, but that was, as Sue said, that was something we talked for quite a bit about, whether we're doing or not is another thing.
Have we, and Mr. Fox brought this up, it's an interesting area, I wasn't thinking about the question initially, was, has the Board of Education in the past either purchased a dollar purchase or just assumed at the end of a lease, equipment where it has sold it off, this type of technology equipment, not desks or chairs, things like that?
Well, I think perhaps the best example, which is even better than copiers, is while technology does change on average every few months, I'm not sure if it's best fit to copiers, but it's clearly when it comes to true technologies such as computers and laptops. And the board, this is by a late night here, with the board in the city of Danbury, during my term, I believe, it's been at least two or three Apple rollovers, Apple purchases, that the board passed with a dollar, not a dollar buyout provision, and was ultimately supported and passed by the council as well. So we have other lease commitments, some that have ended, some that exist today with the dollar buyout conditions as well.
Ben, is it that you actually have a procedure where you sold that equipment?
No. No, not that we sold, and I apologize for this, it's standing here, your question. Not that we've actually sold the equipment, unfortunately, we've, we have several computers still in place today that are there for the sixth, seventh year. We've rolled them over, we tried to update it, we do not, the city does not have the finances for a complete rollover every three, four years.
This specific one, just to follow on to questions that Councilman Chaney says, if you could just highlight the deficiencies in the base proposal, well, actually, let me ask one question first. Did the double A proposal contain anything that was deficient from the standpoint of the RFP?
Deficient, a single variance on the 16 of 65 pieces of equipment, the ability to handle hard stock up to 90 pounds. The equipment as proposed to that by A&amp;A is similar, if not same, equipment that we have today. We've had this equipment in place now for four years, where, of course, in the past 48 months, I have not received a single call, complaint, or concern by an end user anywhere in the district that the equipment on hand cannot handle their requirements or hard stock of the 90 pounds. So deficiencies, requesting deficiencies on base?
Well, and just to go to double A then, so that deficiency is looked at not for what's known as sort of a harmless or inconsequential one?
Correct.
Okay. And then the second question with regard to.
On base, okay. One of our high-end users, not the high-end user, is at the Danbury High School. We have a copy center. We requested a high-speed piece of equipment, a single piece of equipment. Base Technology responded by proposing two equi, two machines to operate in tandem, given that they did not have a machine, or disclosed that they would have a machine that could meet our speed requirement. In addition, this piece of equipment called for, as a base spec, a separate monitor, I believe it was 20 inches. They responded and identified the provisions in there, as well as, our machines have a built-in panel, and will not have the, to separate a 20-inch monitor. At the high copy center, we requested the capability for up to 70 pages at a time, a stapled document. The proposed equipment, the max is 50 pages on it. Now, Base, after the fact, that after making their business decision how best to respond to the RFP, notified me, well, if you really want that type of equipment, we can get it for you. I'm sorry, but I will not allow that. I will not negotiate on terms. I will not negotiate on terms after there's been an open review of the RFP. We had a conversation with Base executives yesterday afternoon. We ended the meeting, still not knowing, what is the fair market value of your equipment? It's like buying a vehicle, and being told after thirty-six months, we'll tell you the residual value of it, should you have an interest in mind. Can't tell you today. Or we choose not to tell you today.
To follow up, so, and I just want to make sure clear for the record, that the single deficiency that you outlined with regard to double A or AA, however it's referred to, is not one that needed to be remedied in order to meet to the performance standards of the district? And there was nothing else that was adjusted after the RFPs of the proposals were received in any one, including double As?
In double As?
No, in any, in any of them.
There were emails, conversations about, well, if it's really interesting, you really need that piece of equipment, you know, we'll make sure to get it for you. Another requirement was a technology requirement, I was known as True Adobe Postscript. It was bid with True Adobe Postscript. It was bid at the absence of use of an emulator. But after the fact, if you really need it, really want it, well, we'll get it for you.
So I was asking maybe, talking past each other, was there any conversation like that?
As a technology requirement, I was known as True Adobe Postscript. It was bid with True Adobe Postscript. It was bid at the absence of use of an emulator. But after the fact, if you really need it, really want it, well, okay, we'll get it for you.
So I was asking maybe, talking past each other here, was there any conversation like that with AA, was there any post-resee of proposal offers or adjustments to remedy if I?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. And, well, you know, I appreciate, you know, the information that's been provided, and I wish it could have been done in a different form, in a different setting, to avoid this particular form. And again, it's just informational. I received a significant amount of information, I just didn't know. I think it's important, though, to get those types of things out on the record. And as we all know, information, sharing of information can ameliorate probably ninety-five percent of the misunderstandings that I have. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Unless you have any questions or things for me, which I have.
By the way, Tom, just to share with the council, that moving forward with the contract as approved by the board will save the city approximately thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand dollars per year when compared to the budgeted allowance built into the current year, and towards the possible points of thirty-seven thousand dollars per year.
I am a council member, we have a good attitude, we'll watch that thirty-seven to ensure.
Thank you.
That's in addition to the two hundred-plus thousand that we've already given back.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you very much for coming this evening. Now, did anybody else in the council have any questions regarding the copiers? Thank you. This is a time-sensitive manner, and on behalf of all of our faculty and our students, we thank you for coming out tonight to try to expedite this. Thank you.
Just wanted to say, I think all of this discussion and the forum that we're having in, as chair of the community relations committee, I think we should call the meeting probably for sooner than later to kind of discuss how we can, in these situations, communicate a little bit better or in a more coordinated fashion, or in a more timely fashion, with the council, the mayor, et cetera. I think that would be very beneficial. So, we'll be calling a meeting very soon for the community relations committee to address this.
There is no permanent liaison between the board and the council. Perhaps that's natural, that we should consider pursuing to have a point council person that is a permanent liaison.